All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the December 14, 2020 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Daniels for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus to thank you for this day. Father God, I want to thank you for this opportunity to lead and to serve your community. Father, we pray tonight that you give us wisdom, understanding, and help us as we make decisions for our city. Father, we also pray for peace in our city and we pray for unity. In Jesus' name, we thank you for all things. Amen.
Amen. And then for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Okay, Councilmember Smiley? Councilmember Smiley?
Who do you go?
I'm here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Uh, present.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I am here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager, any recommended changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Connolly, under Old Business, I would like to request to add three public hearings that were carried over from the December 10 council meeting, City Council meeting. And under New Business, I would request to add to the agenda two additional items. Item number 11, acquisition of additional property for Wildwood Park Development. And item number 12, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 5A to the City of Greenville's Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund Ordinance Number 17-024.
All right.
Anyone would like to make a move?
To move the, move to approve the revised agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? Councilmember Litchfield?
Let the record show, he held up his finger with a one.
He still can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye, thank you.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered and spoken, individuals who had not registered will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered public comment speakers tonight, and I am looking in the public input inbox, and I do not see any messages received for public comment.
All right, thank you very much. We'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Mayor Connolly, the first item under the consent agenda is adoption of the 2021 state legislative agenda. Item number two, acceptance of environmental enhancement grant award and approval of memorandum of understanding. Item number three, award of Wildwood Park Phase One Construction Contract to Design Co Construction Incorporated. Item number four, resolution approving a lease agreement with the Greenville Industrial Epps High School Alumni Heritage Society for space inside the CM Epps Recreation Center. Item number five, resolution indeed of release to abandon a 15 feet wide utility easement across tax parcel number 50113. Item number six, authorization for Greenville Utilities Commission to initiate condemnation proceedings for property easement acquisition for the NC 33 Natural Gas Main Extension. Mayor Connolly, that is the completion of the consent agenda for consideration.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any?
No one has, if no one has an item they'd like to hear, then I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right, motions been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Mayor Pro Tem Glover. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now jump into Old Business and we'll go back to the first public hearing. Mr. Manager, would you like to go over that?
Mayor Connolly, the first public hearing for consideration carried over from the December 16, December 10 council meeting is ordinance to annex the Bobby Ray Mills property involving 1.2705 acres located along the northern right of way of Davenport Farm Road in 625 plus minus feet east of Frog Level Road.
All right, Madam Clerk, did we have any comments that were made during the 24-hour statutory period?
No, sir. We did not receive any comments during that time period.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the council like to discuss this or make a motion?
I'll move to approve it.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the second public hearing. Mr. Manager?
Mayor Connolly, the second public hearing for consideration is ordinance to annex Winston Farms, Phase 11, Section 2, involving 3.8991 acres located north of Stone Wood Drive and near the terminus of Honeysuckle Drive.
All right, Madam Clerk, were there any comments made during that 24-hour statutory period?
No, sir. Mayor Connolly, we did not receive any messages during that time period.
All right, thank you. Any comments or discussions by the council or a motion?
Move to approve the item.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels? Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the third public hearing. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Connolly, Mayor Connolly, the third public hearing for consideration is ordinance to designate the Walter Lancaster Harrington House located at 905 East Fifth Street and further identified as Pitt County Parcel, Parcel Number 10087 as a local historic landmark.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, were there any comments made during this 24-hour statutory period?
No, sir. Mayor Connolly, we did not receive any messages during that time period.
Thank you. Anyone from council?
I'll move to approve it.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. We'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move right into New Business. Item number seven, Mr. Manager?
Item number seven under New Business is resolution authorizing the sale of property located at 431 West Fifth Street by upset bid method. I will share my screen and quickly walk through a presentation. Hope everyone can see this on my screen. The city owns an approximate 0.68 acre parcel property that's been identified as tax parcel 28934 located at 431 West Fifth Street. Property currently has a fair market value per an appraisal of $148,000. And the city has identified the parcel as having no short-term or long-term use to the city. You can see, here's an aerial map of the property. Here's West Fifth Street. As you're moving around West Fifth Street in Albemarle, this is the white, white house right there adjacent to the railroad track. And here's a beautiful picture taken in the early morning in front of the house and from the side. Very beautiful house. North Carolina general statute authorizes the city to sell the property by upset bid after receiving an offer to purchase the property. And so the following are the steps that will be taken as far as the upset bid process to be in compliance with state statute. The council here tonight will hopefully will authorize the sale of the upset bid at a minimum price of $148,000. That will be the beginning price. The city clerk will publish a notice in the paper describing the property, the amount of the initial offer, and the terms of which it may be upset. And we will accept offers in sealed bid format for a period of 30 days. At the end of the 30-day period, all sealed bids will be opened and the highest bid will become the highest bid offered. Then the clerk shall publish a new notice for a 10-day period and shall repeat that process until a 10-day period has passed without a new qualifying upset bid being received. Just to note, a qualifying high bid must also be accompanied by a deposit in the amount of 5% of the bid. At the end of the upset bid process, staff will present the highest bid to council for consideration and the city reserves the right to withdraw the property from sale at any time before the final high bid is accepted and the right of rejection at any time of bids. It's staff's recommendation that council approve the resolution authorizing the sale of the property by upset bid method. I answer any questions if you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Cowan? Anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Um, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number eight. Mr. Manager?
Mayor Connolly, item number eight under New Business is resolution authorizing the sale of property located off New Street by upset bid process. And again, I will share my screen for a quick presentation. The Overton Group LLC has submitted an offer to purchase an approximate 1.94 acre portion of tax parcel 2903 located off New Street. This property has been identified as having no short-term or long-term use for the, to the city. And the property has a fair market value of anywhere between 249,000 and 292,000 dependent on the property's intended use. The offer from the Overton Group is to purchase the property at 260,000. This again is an aerial map of the location of the property. We have First Street Apartments here to the north, Pitt Street here to the, to the east, and Third Street here to the south. And this portion on the backside connecting to New Street is the approximate two acre parcel. The city purchased the property almost 90 years ago for use by Greenville Utilities. And over the last 40 years, we have been utilizing the property to city for city services purposes, both as a public works operations center, a parks maintenance operations center, and most in the last few years, last two years, a lay down area and storage area for various public projects such as the Town Creek Culvert. The property does contain three storage facilities that has been used by the city for just to store various miscellaneous items. Here are a couple of pictures of the location that you can see the three buildings right here that would be utilized by the buyer for storage. The 1.94 acre portion of property is part of a larger 7.46 acre parcel. If the council approves the upset bid process, staff will move forward with the procedure to subdivide the parcel into two separate parcels. North Carolina general statute does authorize the city to sell the property by upset bid after receiving an, an offer to purchase. And per the state statute, Overton has paid the 5% deposit on their offer. So the following are the steps that would be taken from this step, this point forward. Again, council would authorize the sale by upset bid. The clerk would publish the notice of sale describing the property, the amount of the initial offer, and the terms under which the offer may be upset. We would accept the sealed bids for a period of 10 days after the notice of published. And at the conclusion of that 10-day period, the clerk will open the sealed bids and the highest bid shall become the new offer. If a new bid is received, the clerk will again publish the new notice and the upset bid will be repeated until a 10-day period has passed without a new qualifying upset bid. To note, a new qualifying high bid must be accompanied by a deposit in the amount of 5% of the bid. And if no qualifying upset bid is received after the initial public notice, the offer set forth above will be accepted and the city manager shall be authorized to execute the contracts necessary to convey the property to the Overton Group. Staff's recommendation is that council approve the resolution authorizing the sale of the property by upset bid method. I answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Cowan?
There seems to be a little difference in the two methods we're using that were, they're both called an upset bid method, but they seem to have different timeframes and different options for council at the end of the process. Can you explain?
Councilmember Smiley, Councilmember Smiley, you're correct. The, the difference is that we had received an offer for the New Street property from the Overton Group. So that started a, the 10-day period once approved by council to move forward with upset bid process. We have not yet received an upset, a bid for the, the West Fifth Street property. So we felt that it was necessary to provide just a little bit longer period of time to be able to provide that notice to the public, given the fact that we had not received a bid of them.
And the distinction in it coming back to council for final approval, one of them, it seems like we will get another, we would have to decide whether or not to accept it. But in this case, we would.
That's right. By, by moving forward with this resolution right here for the New Street property, basically you are accepting the, the bid for, from the prospective buyer at the, at the proposed rate unless there is an upset bid made to that, that bid. So Councilmember Smiley, for the, for the Fifth Street property, the city's just soliciting, soliciting offers for the property. The city doesn't have a, a bidder who's made an offer on the property. So the city is going through a 30-day period to solicit offers for the property on Fifth Street. That's the distinction.
Okay, thank you. May I show approve?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Litchfield. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number nine. Mr. Manager?
Mayor Connolly, item number nine under New Business is clarification of the mayor's authority to issue emergency proclamations. I would now turn it over to City Attorney Emmanuel McGirt. Emmanuel?
You're muted, Emmanuel.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So Mayor and council, this item is entitled clarification of the mayor's authority to issue emergency proclamations. And the, the city council delegated to the mayor the authority to issue emergency proclamations in 2002. And in that current code provision, it provides the mayor has certain restrictions, authority to issue certain restrictions such as a curfew. Under the current code, it, under state law rather, the North Carolina Emergency Management Act includes restrictions that are not listed in the city code. For instance, in state law, the council or if the, if the power is delegated to the mayor, the, it could be a restriction prohibiting the movement of people in public places. There could be a restriction involving prohibiting the operation of business establishments. And it also has a catch-all provision in state law that the, the city, the council or the mayor could issue a restriction involving other activities or conditions of control which, which are reasonably necessary to maintain order and protect lives or property. So this, this provision here, also I want to remind council that council enacted a temporary ordinance in response to COVID-19 back in March of 2020 that delegated to the mayor all the tools in the toolbox of state law regarding restrictions that could be imposed. And that temporary ordinance expires December 31, 2020. So it expires at the end of this month. So again, this, this provision here, this proposal just aligns the city, the city code with state law and it delegates to the mayor all of the restrictions in state law regarding prohibitions that may be enacted during a state of emergency. So the recommendation is that council approve the ordinance clarifying the mayor's authority to issue emergency proclamations.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Smiley?
I just wanted to ask you another couple of questions, Emmanuel. First of all, these questions are not, in no way reflect on our, the way our mayor has conducted himself during this emergency, which I think has been, you know, laudable and above reproach. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Been an emergency lasting this long, you know? It's always been the sort of thing where I've always assumed emergency powers were something, you know, that an executive would wield because the legislative body had not yet had time to meet, right? But this COVID has kind of redefined that. Obviously, we have continued to meet right on along. And I realize the city has not been in a state of emergency, but it easily could. Does council have the authority to essentially perhaps vacate something that the, the mayor, you know, an order the mayor had given, you know, you know, three weeks, four weeks on or something? Or is, how does, how does the, the council's oversight of these issues coincide with the mayor's authority under these, under, you know, under the ability to declare a state of emergency?
Well, first of all, if the mayor issues a state of emergency, it's based on state law. So there should be a finding by the mayor that if, if there's an emergency, there's an imminent threat to persons or property like COVID-19. It's a public health emergency. Council could check the mayor's authority, first of all, by, at your, at your, at your next meeting, you could, this is a delegation to the mayor. So the council could vote to, you all, only the council could issue emergent, states of emergency. Most cities delegate this authority to the mayor. And if you did have, if the council just wanted to do it yourself, you would have to have a special meeting or wait till you have your regular meetings, which would be inconvenient. But one, one check on, 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 on the mayor's power in this, in this area is that the council could change the code. Or you could, I think you could probably strike the declaration if you thought it was inappropriate because the majority, if the majority of the council wanted to. I would think that would be appropriate as well and legally.
Again, you know, none of that is to suggest that we've even come close to having, losing that kind of faith in the mayor. I just was curious and other people have asked me, how long is an emergency an emergency? You know, if council is able to meet, you know, on, you know, you know, month after month after month for, you know, is, could the council not make those actions, decisions itself, even though, you know, because the time aspect is essentially evaporates at some point, right? I mean, we, if the city wanted to take some action about COVID-19 at this point, barring something really surprising happen, council could do it directly. The mayor wouldn't be obliged to declare a state of emergency and, and take a lot of actions on his own. And so if I understand you correctly, that's exactly what we could do. It, we would just take a, just take a, a meet, an action by council in a, in an appropriate meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I think you did that in March when you directed the mayor to, to, to issue a state of emergency regarding COVID-19. So, so e- even if the mayor does the, unilaterally makes a state of, state of declaration, you could come back and, and, and discuss that declaration with the mayor at a, in one of your meetings.
Thank you for the additional context on that. I appreciate it.
Mr. McGirt, I have an, I have a question. So is this power granted to the mayor unilaterally at any time or must it be in conjunction with the governor issuing an, an emergency order?
It has to be a finding by the mayor that it's a state of emergency. So it doesn't necessarily have to be with the governor because, you know, the governor issues usually statewide orders. If there was a flood in Pitt County, the governor may get involved, but the government, the state may not get involved. But if there's a finding by the mayor or the council that there's a state of emergency, that there's an imminent threat to persons or property, then the mayor, if you delegate the authority to the mayor, could issue a state of, a declaration of emergency or council at its next meeting could issue a declaration of emergency.
Thank you.
Well, since it's so much more convenient to blame the mayor, I move, we, we pass this ordinance and grant him the, the additional authority.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. I do want to say this for the record. I did not bring this, this up. This was not, this was not a power grab by the mayor by any means. All right, so motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. Any other comments or questions?
We've got our eye on you, Mayor.
All right.
By Zoom. Yeah, we'll be, we'll be watching what you do from a long way away.
That sounds good. I can handle that. All right, I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 10. Mr. Manager?
Mayor Connolly, item number 10 under New Business is Chapter 160D, a new land use law for North Carolina. At this point, I'll turn it over to City Planner Brad Sliwski. You have your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to share my screen with you guys. Okay, so basically, a few years ago, the state legislature decided to rewrite and recodify the authorities given to cities and counties and reorganize how, how they're handled. And they've created what's called Chapter 160D. This is the first time they've recodified the land use code for North Carolina since 1905. So it's been over 100 years since they've done this type of thing in North Carolina. And the reasons that they've done it is they wanted to consolidate. And the reasons that they've done it is they wanted to consolidate the various authorities between cities and counties and make it all stem from the same area instead of having to look one place or another place depending on where you are. They want to reorganize everything. Of course, over time, over the span of 100-plus years, as they add things on, things kind of get out of order. It gets a little confusing to know where you're at or where you're trying to find something within the state statutes. And then they also wanted to adopt some consensus reforms or to take what had become standard practice and codify it into law to provide a guarantee for the development community and citizens in the state. So, for the consolidation, right now, any zoning authority that we have derives from chapter 160A. That provides all of our ability to do anything with zoning powers in the city. For any counties, though, they, they look at 153A. And so, what they've done is they've combined them both into 160D. And so, partly this makes development more straightforward because as a developer, of course, you don't have to worry about where, where am I looking for the rules when I move from place to place? It simplifies things for the development community and it also simplifies things in terms of staffing. Because now, if you've worked at a county for 20 years, you haven't necessarily worked at a city for 20 years. You don't, you don't have the same skill sets, you don't have the same knowledge base. But with it being combined, the, you know, the ability to attract staff from various parts of the state, if you're hiring, is much increased. So, that's, that's a, that's an added benefit as well. They want to reorganize. As I said before, you know, it's very messy. There's been a lot of additions over the years. And so, sometimes when you're looking for information in the state statutes or trying to figure out the rules, you're kind of hunting all over the place and, and it makes it a little messy. And so, they've done a new organization scheme that is very logical and coherent. The, the rules read almost in a narrative in terms of what am I looking for? So, it's much easier for a developer or a citizen to comprehend when they're looking at the state statutes and trying to understand what exactly the rules are for their property. In terms of consensus reforms, the, none of these changes are major policy changes. It's mostly clarifying amendments for, for things that maybe there was difference of opinions on interpretation that have been settled over time. And then also eliminating archaic jargon. So, like I said, 1905, you know, they, they talked a little different back then. They wrote a little differently. The terminology doesn't necessarily apply the same way as it does today. So, so the new 160D, you know, takes out all that old mumbo jumbo we don't need anymore. So, part of the consensus reforms is the removal of conditional use districts and conditional use permits. Luckily, we as a city don't employ those right now, so we won't have to make any changes. But something that will impact you guys are plan consistency statements. They've vastly simplified them. And then also, we've codified vested rights timelines. So, so right now, in different parts of the states, if you get a development approval, that's valid for, you know, whatever the jurisdiction specifies. And 160D has established standard minimums for different types of approvals that will help out the development community, be sure when they get an approval, what that means exactly. Probably, in terms of terminology, one of the biggest changes is the introduction of the term development regulation. Right now, you hear a lot of things. You hear code, you hear ordinance, you hear, you hear regulation. But, but now, all of those things end up lumped under the phrase development regulation. Anything that acts as a reg, anything that regulates any development has this, this term now instead of the five or six different terms that were employed before. So, that, that simplifies things and it also clarifies the different decision types. Because, you know, they were introduced a very long time ago and they've kind of grown to mean things over time, but the statute's not exactly, or previously wasn't exactly clear on it. And now, it's quite clear exactly what we're talking about when it comes to, say, a legislative decision that you might take or quasi judicial decision, you might more typically see at the Board of Adjustment. Getting back to plan consistency statements a little bit, for rezonings, will no longer be required to adopt a plan consistency statement. When doing a rezoning, it will still be advisable and most likely you still will. Because if you don't adopt a plan consistency statement, you must address plan consistency during this discussion period for the item. And a lot of times, there is no discussion or there's minimal discussion. You don't want to run the risk of forgetting it, but in the event that you do forget to adopt a plan consistency statement, with these new changes, you're probably still going to be fine. So, it'll be a little nicer. Vested rights, I'm not going to run through this whole chart with you guys. It's a little tedious. But basically, what this means is that there are guaranteed minimum approval periods for projects and developments around town that will help to, you know, help developers to make more informed choices with their investments. They do expand conflict of interest regulations a little bit with this, this change. And I'm going to go through the conflict of interest rules as they apply now. The changes to conflict of interest are already in effect. And so, a lot of this is pretty much the same as it is right now, but it's slightly expanded. So, you know, if you have a direct financial, if you stand a benefit directly financially from a project, obviously, you shouldn't be involved in the voting on the project. That can be a conflict of interest. But now also, you know, if, if a family member, a close family member, say a brother or spouse or something like that has a similar conflict, then you, at that point, as a member of the governing board or as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission or also as a staff member, say, you know, my brother tried to present a rezoning item, I wouldn't then be able to be the staff member presenting the item to you guys because that would present a conflict. And then also, that, that expands on a staff level as well to administrative decisions. There's a lot of decisions that never make it to a board level. And basically, staff members who have those close associational ties can no longer make decisions or issue approvals. When that's the case, it would have to be delegated to another staff member. And then quasi judicial decisions, this is the same as before, but just wanted to reiterate it, especially in light of the project that you guys have coming up early next year for quasi judicial decisions. It's really not good to talk about the decision outside of the meeting. It can cause a whole lot of problems. And so, just don't have conversations when a decision's quasi judicial, which is special use permit type deal. Or if you do, you have to disclose them and that may cause complications. So, best to just avoid it. And like I said, that was the case before. So, prior projects, so if, so if any plan or project that was approved under the old set of regulations, the 160A, they'll still be able to operate the same way that they, they do, did when they were given approval. This won't impact already approved projects and they can move forward as they were previously. Whatever the rules were at the time that you applied are going to be the rules that you're locked in under. So, deadlines, the state has imposed deadlines upon us to implement the changes for 160D. And basically, we have to have everything adopted by July the first. So, they'll, the 160D provisions are out there and if we pass it, you know, tomorrow, then they'll be in effect tomorrow. But regardless of anything else, we have to have it done by July the first of 2021. So, we're on a bit of a clock. We have plenty of time to do it. And so, for our timeline, what we were thinking is staff would have a draft of the ordinance ready by February and it would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on February. And then, we'll take it in parts to you guys because it's going to be somewhat lengthy or it might end up being somewhat lengthy. We're thinking it will be. So, we would take the first half of it to you guys in March for a public hearing and discussion. And then, in April, we'd take the second half to you guys for more, for another public hearing on the, the second half, discussion on the second half and hopefully approval either that month of the whole thing or maybe the following month if you have any changes or anything needs to function differently for that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Hey, questions for Mr. Sebior? Councilmember Smiley?
So, this is all process and procedure. It would not involve any, we're not going to update any maps or any, any zoning on the ground or any, any actual programmatic?
Yeah, yeah, this won't have a very broad impact on how things actually function. It is all process. It's all kind of in the background. These are the enabling statutes. And so, instead of all the enabling, all of our language in our ordinance pointing one direction, we now have to make a point in another direction. And there'll be a few other minor changes we have to, we'll have to make to come in line with, you know, the consensus reforms that I mentioned before and some of the vocabulary. But it really shouldn't, you shouldn't really feel the impact in a major way unless you're actively reading through our code on a regular basis.
Councilmember Smiley, you may be guilty. He's been known to read a few codes on a regular basis. Bedtime, bedtime reading. Any other questions? Do you feel as if this is going to be pretty tedious work for the staff? Does it look like it's going to be, I guess, hard to accomplish to stay or to get everything done?
Uh, yeah, tedious is the correct word. So, it's really going through everything and making sure that, that it lines up. There's, there's some help where we directly reference the old enabling statutes and we can swap all that stuff out and a lot of that's already accomplished. But we do have to make sure that every other aspect of it is in compliance. And so, that's kind of reading through a lot. So, it's a lot of reading. It's a lot of double checking. And tedious is for sure the correct word, but we should be able to accomplish it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Best of luck.
Thanks.
And Mayor, just to answer your question, the school government has written a whole book on this change to 160D. So, it's a, it's a big deal. So, it's going to be a lot of work for, for the staff.
I will send, I'll send Councilmember Smiley by there tonight to pick it up. We're going to have him report back to his next meeting.
Mayor, there's one thing that Mr. Sebior left out. This is, I believe, his last city council meeting with us.
Oh, my goodness.
He is going to move on to greener pastures.
It's not always greener on the other side.
Greensboro, is that a, that greener? What should be greener than Greenville?
Uh, I'm actually, I'm from New Zealand originally and I'm actually moving back there early next year, so.
Oh, my goodness, maybe it is greener over there.
They can make you quarantine for about 18 months.
Two weeks, two weeks and a fourth.
He doesn't know it yet, but we're going to send him all this tedious work.
Oh, wow.
Best of luck, best of luck to you, Mr. Sebior.
Thank you.
And thank you for.
Is that why he was so excited and was that the four o'clock meeting?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. He'd have been gone by now if we'd, if we'd have talked about this in four.
Well, good luck, good luck to you. Thank you so much for everything you've done here in, in the city of Greenville.
Thank you.
No other questions? All right, I guess we'll move on to item number 11.
Mayor Conley, Mayor Conley, item number 11 under new business, the acquisition of additional property for Wildwood Park. And I would like to quickly share just a couple of slides. City is proposing to purchase five parcels of property totaling 185 acres located southwest of Olpak Tullis Road and northeast Greenville Boulevard to be add to the property's previously acquired property in September 2019 at the site of Wildwood Park. Following is a, an aerial map that shows the property currently owned by the city for Wildwood Park here on the east and the additional parcels right here that are being proposed for purchase to the west. In total, that's over 340 acres of property. Now, this map does show the exact location of the property and the large lakes that make it up. Property will be used to make in the connection between River Park North and Wildwood Park through a series of primitive trails that on a round trip basis will total more than 10 miles. It's absolutely awesome. Property will also be used to provide water sport opportunities to the public, hopefully in the very near future. Funding, staff proposes purchasing the 185 acres tracked from the estate of Phil Carroll at a price of $617,000. Funding to purchase the property will be appropriated in the city's Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund. Staff recommends approving the purchase of the 185 tract property for $617,000. And Gary Fenton, Director of Recreation and Parks, or myself, will be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cowan or Mr. Fenton? Absolutely nothing? No comments? Anybody excited?
I have no questions, but thank you, Gary, for all the work you've put into this project so far. It's really exciting to see that we're going to get this much, this much incremental parkland for, you know, such a small investment, you know, financially from the city. So, really excited to see that and great work by staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can't count, if we count Gary's sweat equity, then it's a lot more. I move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Protam Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to item number 12. Mr. Manager?
Mayor Conley, item number 12 under new business is a budget ordinance amendment number 5A to the city's of Greenville's Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund, ordinance number 17-024. Now, this budget amendment will appropriate the necessary funding within the Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund necessary to secure the purchase of the 185 acre tract unjust previously approved in item number 11. Staff recommends approval of the budget ordinance amendment number 5A. And Byron Hayes, Director of Financial Services, or myself, will be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Cowan or Mr. Hayes? Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. The council, motion was made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Protam Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield?
I see him in here. Councilmember Litchfield?
There are you.
Just call it five to one. I'll vote yes.
Aye.
There he is.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye, yes.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to call on the city attorney. He'd like to make a comment about one of the earlier items that were on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I forgot to mention my colleague, Mr. Donald Phillips. He worked on the ordinance with a clarification of the mayor's, mayor's authority to issue emergency proclamations. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Phillips. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donald Phillips. We appreciate all your hard work. Sometimes you're the man behind the scenes, but we always appreciate you. All right, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Cowan?
Mayor Conley, just very quick, just a few things. I would like to say thank you to Gary. He really had, Gary Fenton, he really has worked very, very hard on, on this Wildwood Park property and has just done such an outstanding job. And this is something that will live as a legacy for generations to come here in the city of Greenville. So, just thank him for everything he's done. He, he will, he will be able to, to live through that property for generations. So, thank you to Gary. Brad Sebior, we want to wish him good luck as he, as he moves on to New Zealand. I can say on behalf of the city manager's office that he, he was very, very well respected by the, the city manager's office and will be greatly missed. So, just good luck to Brad. And then finally, city manager Anne Wall is traveling this evening to her parents' home in Virginia. And just on behalf of all the city staff, we, we just want to wish Anne safe travels and that we are, we are thinking about her and her family.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Cowan. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Callan. Now move on to comments by the mayor and the city council. Let's start with Councilmember Daniels.
I knew it.
I can go the other way if you want.
Now, just want to, this is our last meeting of the year, so wish Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone. And to encourage everyone during this time to get to know some different cultures. You know, we talk about that a lot. And, you know, whether it's Hanukkah, or Kwanzaa, or Christmas, let's learn to educate ourselves. I know for myself personally, there are other cultures I know of, but don't really know about. And I think that's something important if we're going to unify our city in the ways that we intend to do it. I also like to thank all the artists, if you have not been down there to see it, they did a wonderful job this weekend. And just listening to them, you know, in order to share their hearts, their craft, they left their families, they took time off their jobs, you know, some of them went without pay. It was just a wonderful example of how creative we can be. And I'd also like to show a picture of these wonderful artists, so that they will be able to see exactly who our hardworking artists are, as well as their names. They put in a lot of work for what was done. And the atmosphere this weekend was just, it was wonderful. And I think it was something that Greenville needs right now amid COVID and financial loss for some, and different things like that. This was what we needed as a reminder of who we are. And they just showed the very best of us, and I want to thank all of them again. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Daniels.
And their names.
Councilmember Bell?
I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, since this is the last time that we will, you know, meet before the new year. Happy holidays to those who do not celebrate Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone else as well. I'd also like to express gratitude to the artists that showed up this weekend and worked. I visited very briefly on Sunday afternoon as they were finishing up, and you could tell a lot of hard work went into the project, and that, you know, it was a taxing project on a lot of them, you could just tell that they were extremely exhausted. So thank you to them for doing that, and for putting a great piece of art on display for our community. I'd like to express, you know, prayers for our city manager, who's dealing with, you know, family health issue right now. And also express condolences to our assistant city manager, Michael Callan, for the loss of his father recently. Outside of that, I have no other further comments. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you.
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Mayor Protem Glover?
I would also, I could not attend the, with the painting of the mural, but I want to thank all the students who we endured, we had many meetings, and to, for us to come together and come up with something that is, Monica sent me pictures, that is so beautiful, and it expresses how people feel. So let us begin to heal any open wounds that we have in our city in regards to racism, because people aren't going anywhere. We have to include them into our, into all of our processes. And we're here for the entire city, for the entire citizenry of the city. And let us continue to keep that in mind. There are times when we have to make decisions that are hard decisions. But all in all, I'm glad that through the meetings with the council members, the artists and everybody, and the city managers, we all came, we all came to an agreement to do this. And so, and I hope that this is one of many that are done in our city. You know, if you never experienced racism, you will never understand how bad it is and how bad it hurts. So let us begin to reach out and love one another regardless of our skin color, or our race, or creed, because we are all children of God, and we should be able to love one another without any prejudices. Also, I want to thank the Human Relations Council, who have worked diligently to try to bring our city together and talk about the issues of racism. Yes, it's still here, and it's not going anywhere until we make an effort to make it go. The leaders, we are the leaders. And I look at you all on this panel, all the leaders of our city, we have to be in agreement and walk lockstep to change the ugliness and the bitterness of racism. And also, I think that's it. And so shall we move on to the next year, working together, loving one another, and loving those who are different than we are? Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Glover. I too also want to make sure we keep our city manager and her family in our prayers, keep our assistant city manager, Michael, in our prayers as well, and his family. Keep Mayor Protem Glover and her family in our prayers. I know it's been very tough. This has been a tough year for many, many people, many that are very close to us, including our assistant city manager, Mr. Graves, as well. Keep you in our prayers as well. It's been a very tough year for many people, not just with our city, but with the city staff, but throughout the entire world this year. So I'm looking forward to 2021, new beginnings, a new opportunity for us to move our city forward, and I'm excited about the possibilities. I do want to say thank you too to the council. It has been a very trying year. I don't think anybody can disagree with that, that we have endured quite a bit this year. I think that all of us, when we were sworn into office about a year ago, would never imagine that we would have gone through a pandemic that only comes around 100 years, and be able to navigate it and navigate it the way we have. And we're not through it yet, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us still to go. But I want to say thank you to all the council members. I've enjoyed this tough year with you. I'm looking forward to hopefully a much easier year next year. But I want to say thank you for all your hard work and all that you've done to make sure that we've kept our city in good order and focusing on making sure that we're looking out for all the citizens throughout the entire city. I'd also like to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone, no matter what holiday you celebrate. I hope that you have a wonderful end of the year. I think all of us will probably be jumping up and down when the ball drops at the end of this year, because we're looking forward to great, great things in 2021. And I'm going to tell you right now, a lot of really, really good things are happening in our city right now. I think last week alone was just absolutely incredible. All the job announcements that we're seeing right now, seeing reports that, you know, that a lot of our financial numbers are much better than we expected they were going to be. A lot of good things are happening. I think people are really starting to look at Greenville as a place that they want to move to, that they want to start a family, they want to start a career here. So I think that we're going to see some really exciting things happening in the years to come. And I'm looking forward to working with each one of you as we enter the new year. So happy holidays, everyone, and we will see you in 2021. Now I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
I move.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.